The Borough of Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Borough Council, Legislative meeting, July 21, 2022, is now called for. Please stand before the President of the House.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of his or her will.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, here is President Sharon, Councilor Harris.
President.
Vice President, Reverend Johnson.
President.
Counselor Teneke, Columbia. Tilly Delbord. Counselor Carla Brooks. Counselor McFolby. Counselor Tori Monroe. Counselor Leanna Groclaw.
The most president in the mayor's seat?
We have a solicitor representative. Our finance director, Mr. Nemeese. Now, please, Mr. Reverend. Our tax collector, Mr. Landa Beatty.
She's here.
Thank you, thank you. And our representative for Mr. Joe Escuso, our engineer for Mononi.
Present.
Thank you. Council President, all of Congress.
Council President, Vice President sitting in the mayor's seat. I'm not sure you have a question.
For citizens' forum, the agenda has only come into three minutes. I want to welcome all of you today, particularly residents and neighbors that came out for our mid-year finance budget report that was prepared in the format of a PowerPoint presentation. That finance report will be available online within the next forty-eight hours. For those of you that weren't here for that, I would strongly encourage you to take a look at that report. And if you have any questions, you can always post those questions to Mr. Dodson, and he'll get them to Mr. Nafees Nichols. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, very much. The report was very, very well done and prepared and answered a lot of questions. It will give, in fact, give us a municipal budget 101. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam President.
For business residents wishing to speak, there is a particular decorum that we are attempting to maintain, a form of respect and honor, a form of, I was going to say, goodwill, for those of us that are the members of this council and the public to get, to do the things that we're charged to do, and that is to take care of the business of the borough. So with that in mind, there's a code of conduct. You have police officers, in fact, our acting chief, Burns, making the decisions, and the officers that are here. So just want to make sure that there's respect.
What's his name? I didn't hear it. What's his name? Sean!
Like a Las Vegas turnip.
You gotta get your microphone where we can hear it. I can't hear you. I'm letting you know. Don't, no, no, no. I'm letting him know, sir. I cannot hear. Sir, I hear you. I want to hear everything clear. Thank you.
Let me just give you the order of tonight's meeting. We will have a citizens' forum. The citizens' forum is every resident that has something that they want to share, or questions they may want to ask. The law provides for, and this borough council provides for, an opportunity for you to make an order for us to. You got a call. I'm going to instruct you, did you complete a forum to speak? There's a three-minute limitation.
There's no pens out here. There are frequently no pens.
Never.
It is never. It is not true, it is not frequent.
Mr. Dodson?
No pens.
There's no pens.
There's not a pen.
Are there any other citizens that have not completed a request for public comment? Okay. I think the forums are White House, Lieutenant Burns, the forums are there.
Who needs a forum? Anybody else? I've got a pen, anybody, I've got a pen. Anybody else need a forum to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else need a forum? Anybody need a pen? Does a pen, anybody?
When you complete your forum, please pass the office.
Much law, so that they could still longer send their junior associates, and that they would be providing us with, if we're familiar with municipal law. People previously told me they were no longer wanting to send their junior associates.
Yeah, we don't want the Las Vegas turnip.
I'm equally concerned with respect to the audience who we told about respect in the forum, but yet still, our mayor is sitting on the sideline when he should be placed in a part on his podium here. State Councilor Rene Johnson has taken his place. So perhaps any questions relating to anything that the mayor presides over, direct them to Councilor Rene Johnson, as she is pretending to be the mayor for the evening.
I'm not ashamed.
You are the mayor? You changed your name tag. Sorry.
Are there any other residents with forums?
Yep.
Okay. While we are waiting, there will be some adjustments to the agenda here tonight. The minds of the board in particular will be held after the department heads have made their presentations. As many of you, as many of you are aware, are...
We didn't hear the last thing you said. Was being held after?
Her report?
My report.
Okay, thank you.
My report will be right after the department heads, in order to expedite the meeting tonight. There are many concerns, meetings being too long, and discouraging residents coming out. So we want to be respectful of people, time, their evening, and we'd like to get the business of the town completed and move on from there.
So do we have to, don't we have to take a vote to make changes to the agenda? Can't just be advised, we're a democracy, not a retreat. We're supposed to take a vote on changing the agenda, and then we're supposed to post that change agenda on our website.
We need a vote where it be a permanent change, so our four directors, you know, don't need to wait so long to get their reports.
I'm also concerned in previous meetings where Council President didn't wait until the very end to give her sermon. She would end the meeting immediately thereafter without asking, without taking any questions and without acknowledging the public. So just so the public is aware.
I want to empower the public. Councilor Monroe will have her order.
Councilor Monroe. Yes, she is. She is not ordered because...
She has not been acknowledged by this chair.
When asked to be recognized, I am ever excited by this chair.
And Councilor Monroe is out of order.
Excuse me, your audience?
So what I want to do next is, Mr. Joffrey, would you come to the podium, please? Answers for Shaun. Answers for Shaun. Is it Boffey?
Yes.
Mr. Boffey.
Boffey.
Mr. Boffey.
Okay.
Would you come to the microphone? You have three minutes to express your concern. Yes, it's on.
Okay. My name is Boffey Jarater. I live at Forty-One West Broadway Avenue in Clinton Heights. I am the Chief Executive Officer of the African Cultural Alliance of North America, the largest community-based service organization that is located at fifty-five thirty First Street Avenue in Philadelphia. We represent almost about a hundred and thirty thousand African and Caribbean immigrants in the Philadelphia area. Shaun, a child that died in police custody here in the Gilling Borough, unrelated to that child. And for us, we are baffled by the fact that there hasn't been any relationship between us and the borough, or the borough leadership. We are here tonight to issue, Madam President, to ensure the public and us that there will be a full investigation of causes leading to the death of Shaun. We are aware of the mental health crisis that Shaun faced. I worked for the City of Philadelphia Department of Public Human Services for over eleven years. I know what mental health issues are. And because of that, we know when we call police, we know that the first line of defense is for the police to call mental health crisis team. Here in Napuah, which is just a walking distance from this hearing room, is the crisis center at Fitzgerald University. That's where we expected Shaun to have been taken.
Come on.
And now we know that that was not the case. Rather, I understand, they say he had a worry. Out there is a need for professional healing by the police here in Gilling, but we are aware that the child was placed in custody, and the next thing we hear is that the child is dead. All of you, amazingly, are mothers and fathers of this council borough. It pains us to know that there hasn't been a response by Yedding Borough through its mayor and through this council, to ensure that there should not be screaming and yelling on the street calling for investigation and deep knowledge of what really happened to Shaun. Tonight, I'm here as a family member to make sure that his death is not swept on the rug.
Come on.
We pay taxes, just let everybody...
Come on, yep? Come on.
Thank you.
That's good. That's good for all.
Mr. Jawar Khan? Next, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon to you as well, and good afternoon to the rest of the council. My name is Jawar Khan. I'm nephew of Ms. Yacarson, the mother of Shaun, who unfortunately tragically passed away as we was on here, well, in custody of the department here. I am only about three years older than Shaun, and as I said, I'm the mother of the nephew, so you can see how personal this is for me. This is a young black man that was entrusted with the police.
Come on.
Within less than two hours to get such bad news, and still, within almost two weeks later, to have no update on what's going on, honestly, it's quite embarrassing. As a council, just honestly, just even the bickering that we're seeing here, somebody's child is dead.
Come on.
We are sitting here trying to... That could be any one of your sons.
That's right.
That could be Senator Williams' son.
My son.
Your chief's son, it could be their son, it could be me. And yet we have no answers. And frankly, it's even much more embarrassing that we have a council that's so black.
Come on.
We have a black council.
Come on.
And we can't get justice for Shaun? No justice.
No justice. No peace.
Madam President, we're here once again, as I said last time, we had a conversation. We are not enemies of the police. We support our police to the highest extent.
Come on.
We have always supported our police. We need our police to support us now. And we know there are some few bad apples.
That's right.
But that doesn't mean, you know, the other apples can't stand up for us. Because this isn't a fight for just Shaun, this is a fight for our community at large. And it's a shame, after this situation happened, the mother's house was broken into. And when the mother's house was broken into, do you know where the hands was pointed? People were speculating, this particular borough. That is a shame. And when the house was broken into, I told the mother, let's call the police. You know what she said? Hell, no, they're not coming to my house. She's terrified. She's terrified of cops.
Come on.
She paid taxes. She's police, same police officers, and she's terrified to even get a, to even call you when something happens.
Oh, my God.
That is a shame, and that is embarrassing to not just Yedding Borough, but to the United States in general. When we immigrated to this country, most of our members here are immigrants. When we immigrated to this country, we immigrated from a war-thrown country for a reason.
Come on.
That was to live the American dream.
Come on.
Shaun didn't even get a chance to live that.
No.
And we all sitting here, we're playing politics out of a young guy's head. That is embarrassing.
Embarrassing.
And so I see all of our council members here, please put our differences aside, especially our political affairs. Let's get justice for Shaun.
That's right, Shaun.
If your family are willing to work with you and open to communications, one thing we won't do is, we're not going to the small talks. We want justice, and we want to have... It's my understanding that the council...
Sir, sir, just your brief minutes, all right? Thank you.
Oh, wow.
You got it. How about you? Hands to the floor. No justice.
No peace.
Liz?
All right, I'm with your talking, so don't start my timer yet, because I just want to preface this, don't start before I get to the podium. To the family, my condolences. My comment is targeted at council, because they are not sharing the responsibility. I understand that neglect happened. I understand that a person encaseting...
Your time has started.
Oh, just shut up. A person encas... It takes a depraved individual to use someone's personal tragedy for their own advantage. Instead of investing in our community and police department, you are doing your best to dismantle both. The twenty thousand dollar business block party for the seven hundred block of church, flag bay, ten thousand for banners, paying friends like Gary, royally for abysmal service, bribing former political foes like Isaac for their cooperation by giving them high-paying jobs they can't even perform. You are embezzling more money than the FOP settlement you used as an excuse to fire Chief Chachi. Every time there's a tragedy involving police in the national news, Chief Chachi spoke out against the police and made sure his people understood what their mistakes were so it wouldn't happen here. Now, after removing the leadership from the police department, you're using the death of another woman's son to try to further smear the reputation of our police officers, implying there's a cover-up. Officers who responded to a mother's call for help, these are the very same men you will call without hesitation next time you need help.
How?
Do you even see like that as individual humans? We already know Loren can't tell one white man from another without name tags. I have met those individuals in the police department.
Come on.
I know their temperaments, and unlike councilors, they are required to pass psychiatry evaluations. You have never bothered to get to know the people in our police department, you can't even remember the lieutenant's name half the time. I watch every police interaction I see and I have for years. I care about my neighbors and my black relatives who visit my neighborhood. I can see quite a bit from my windows. I saw the time Matt O'Donnell changed the tire for that elderly couple that was not staged. Drunk drivers smash up on Pop Tree, I see it. And I can see how you hid at home when this tragedy happened. You lied to the news reporter over the phone claiming three-quarter staffing of the fully-staffed police department. Hiding and lying are not the actions of a concerned leader. Perhaps you are assuming our police officers are men like the ones you raised, Sharon. That certainly could have been your son instead of Mrs. Carson's son in that eighty-five-year-old holding cell.
I can't stand it, Sharon. I have to go. I can't stand it. I've got to go. I can't stand it.
Happy day, Mr. Green. We have too many women who are criminals, are married to criminals, or who have raised criminals, making decisions for our community.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Even worse than the strategy of our police department.
Excuse me, your time is up.
With your accusations of a criminal, you are discrediting. You are discrediting the Black Lives Matter movement with red hair. How does it look when they try to presume justice is granted and they're being able to use...
Excuse me, your time is up.
What do we want? Justice. What do we want? Justice. Say his name. Say his name. What do we want?
We need Chief Chachi back.
Cindy, a message?
It is no fair to cut off my time because people are clapping so loud.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I tend to agree.
All right. I didn't even know about this young man. I sat there, here, I've been living here for forty-five years, and Yedding is changing drastically. I haven't been to these meetings, and this is changing drastically. So what I'm here for is about the tax office, which is Yelanda McFolby. I understand that she does not have an office anymore, and I understand that she, that also, that when it comes to making phone calls or anything, she has to use her private phone. That's an inactive position.
That is correct.
So it's not as appointed for people of this councilship elected this young woman to take care of taxes. Now, with her not having an office to foil the public to come in case there's something wrong with her taxes, it's a sin. First of all, you're affecting not only, take out the personal thing and deal with the baggage. When you need to bring an issue up about the taxes, you have no way of accomplishing. And I know that it's always been an office, like I said, I've been here forty-five years, so I know there's always been an office. The office is a little teen square box, but whatever, it's an office where you can have files at. So I feel like everyone here are homies. So you're affecting a homeowner in order to be able to say, I need to come up because there's maybe something, some discrepancy in their paperwork, or, you know, the taxes. We're already going to the school taxes, I think, which should have been out, because I know that normally comes out a little bit earlier than what it is now. It still hasn't come out. And I fall on y'all because of what you've been. But bottom line, that's a very huge tax. So people are going to want to come to the office, maybe, you know, for the homestead, and that's not a bill, because she doesn't have an office. And she shouldn't be using her own phone. Wait, let me just say this. She shouldn't be using her own phone to take messages from the public. That's all I'm saying. I just think we need to do right, because we, you know...
What I would really appreciate you doing, if either after this meeting, or schedule the time, to meet with Mr. Dodson, or...
That'll work.
He'll have some complete information.
I'm trying to schedule the form.
Has some tax collection...
It's a tax collection.
A drop box isn't enough.
You don't get back to nobody.
You're not rich, you're playing it all anyway. Ms. Hughes, do you have an office in this borough?
Currently, yes.
Currently, you do.
Have they asked you to move out of the borough?
Ms. Adam? Ms. Adam, you're next. Have you been asked to move your office outside of the borough? Ms. Adam?
She said yes. So she's been asked to move her office outside of the borough. Well, I was made aware of that request for you to move your office outside of the borough, and I'm sure that Council Monroe hasn't heard, Council Beatty has not heard. And we are absolutely against that. I don't know what the reasonings are for that. We have not been consulted with respect to that. And it is a great disadvantage to the community of Yedding if you put the tax collector outside of this borough. It's not right.
I respond to that. Point of order, point of order. There is a connection to all of this that I see. Everyone associated with me and my church should have kicked out of this borough. They did that to Reverend Sonya Trueheart, they put on the zoning board, and then they kicked her off. They did that to the tax collector, because their minister is in my church, and they slammed him in the face.
Mr. Mayor, you're out of order. You're out of order.
You're against my church, you're against the church, and you're against everyone that's connected with me.
And that's borderline discrimination.
You have the floor. You have the floor. Thank you.
That's a fact.
The tax collector has an office.
You have the floor. Let's get the, let the meeting run.
I want to talk to my condolences to the members of the family of Shaun. And then I'm also going to talk with regards to the budget. I think that the budget is very important, and I think one of the things that we actually need to do is start spending on public safety. We've talked for many months about the state of the city of New York. And there's a correlation with regards to that, but we've attended meetings, a workshop about four months ago, where it was specifically stated that the full-time staff was understaffed by five or six people with regards to the police force. And I think it's important to have a fully-staffed police force. We need to hire a lot of police, the tools, the equipment, the staff to effectively do their jobs and protect the residents of this borough. And that needs to be done, and it needs to be made a high priority. We need to do it now. I know that the last council meeting, when we were talking about hiring a part-time police officer, one of the council members stated, we'll do it when we feel it's needed, not when you have requested. Well, we need the police, we need to give them the tools to do their job. I don't know whether or not not having a fully-staffed police force had anything to do with this unfortunate incident that we're sitting, but who knows? It could have. We're willing to spend with regards to everything else. We are a borough of thirteen thousand people. That means that we need to have a diversified police force with regards to expenditures. And Isaac, I don't mean to, I'm trying to make a point with the next thing, so please don't take this personally. When we hired you as the borough manager, you gave an additional twenty-five thousand to virtue salary.
Hire an assistant.
We also hired...
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's an additional one hundred thousand dollars that we're paying on an annual basis. It's not a one-time thing, it's going to be an annual. You take into what we're paying for Joel Avery, Gary Court, when you take all of that, that's an additional, total of about two hundred thousand... When you take all of that, that's an additional, um, total of about two hundred thousand dollars that we're spending every year. If we can spend on this, why can't we spend on the police force? Public safety.
This building was built in nineteen thirty-seven. The police facilities are antiquated and unsafe, and you need to invest in that!
We really, we really need to reassess our priorities and listen to what the residents are saying. Every single breath, well, maybe not every single, but a lot of the residents are saying, "We really need to take a look with regards to what we're spending on public safety." Um, and now we're time to do it. We need to put politics aside and really take a look with regards to this. Public safety is a good investment, uh, so we need to start spending with regards to that. And the other thing that I'm hearing is I'm hearing residents comment, well, I'm having a lot of difficulty. And it's sad.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Well, it just says, we can hear people.
Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up.
Public safety as they...
Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
I feel a little bit of a change with the response, with the response to, uh, to the finance director. Uh, made a very salient point before many of you were here so that you don't leave with misinformation. I'm gonna ask the finance director to, uh, speak to the fact that, uh, for the past six years, seven years, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Nichols, excuse me. So that Mr. Nichols can express the answer that you asked during the budget session tonight, earlier tonight. Mr. Nichols, would you, uh, um, expound on the fact that the eighteen full-time, the seventeen full-time officers and the, that particular statistic and the part-timers that we do have hired here? Uh, what does the budget allow? What has it been since you've been here?
We don't have seventy. Don't we have sixteen? Where do you get seventeen?
Uh, Mr. Nichols has the floor so that people here tonight do not leave with the wrong information with regards to the full staffing, a full complement of police officers. And where that statistic, where that statistic came from was about seventeen years ago during an FBI recommendation to populations in a number of police. Yehden Borough, Yehden Borough has not had a...
Where, where's that report?
Is this about eighteen-year-old information?
You're not, you're not, that's not a report.
Seventeen-year-old information?
You're, that's not a report.
Uh, Mr. Nichols.
He don't even know, he don't even know what you're asking him. He confused.
I want you to leave.
Look at the wrinkles in his forehead. He confused. He don't even know what you're asking him. You want him to lie for you. He don't know how to write up a lie quick. He's not one of your kids!
Madam President, what I'll say is, again, in the budget presentation earlier today, what I stated was...
Would you please let Mr. Nichols speak? Thank you.
What I stated was since I've been with Yehden Borough, I've been here since June one of twenty-eighteen, the borough has had seventeen police officers since I have been here. We budgeted that amount since I've been here. In fact, when I got here, I believe we had fifteen. We increased about two. This current budget does a lot for an additional police officer for this fiscal year. To date, we've spent ten percent of what was budgeted on part-time officers. So, there is dollars, there are dollars there for part-time officers to, uh, to complement the police department. I know we just hired a part-time officer. I'm not a part of that process. I don't know where we are in that process. I can't answer that. But I can only tell you, okay, I can only tell you that since I've been here that what the number was. And every budget year that requests a man, we can accommodate enough that council adopts the final budget.
So, Mr. Nichols, if we, if, uh, if the council adopted that we needed twenty-two police officers, would you then budget for twenty-two?
Yes.
So, this is, so what's in our budget is not the number of officers that we need.
Exactly.
That your, Ms. Hughes, time to spend this to make it, yes, eighteen-year-old budgeted because that's what, that's what we have. And then your council placed the moratorium on hiring police.
Uh, Ms. Penny McDonald? Now, don't let her go for ten minutes like last time because she's seen through your life. You're timing you too.
My name is Penny McDonald, and I am a resident of Yehden for over forty years. And I would like to do my condolences to the families. I'm very sorry to hear about what happened. And I support you in your charge to find out exactly what happened.
Amen!
There's a lot of things happening here today. And it's, uh, as somebody mentioned, I think it was this fine young man, there's a lot of politics going on. The unfortunate thing about what's going on here in Yehden is that we don't see you all every month when you need to know what's going on. Things going on in Yehden that you need to be aware of. There's some lies put out there that you don't hear the, the, the truth about. And I'm just gonna hit on a couple of bullets because I have a short amount of time. But if you want to talk to me after this meeting, I'm open to do that. Okay? So, I'm gonna be going through some things real quick. Number one, but, number one, uh, bullet that I wanted to mention is that Yehden was a sleepy town where people would come to raise their families and to retire. We have some council members up here along with one of our other leadership persons here who invited the dispensary to come out. The dispensary came out and the community said they didn't want it. The residents had all kind of rallies. We got a young lady here who has, uh, that's a warehouse and bringing about rallies. And, and when folks come to her with complaints, she tries to do something about, and that's Mrs. Leslie Curtis. Now, as a result of these rallies that took place when the community said that they did not want that dispensary, the former president who's sitting right here, she didn't come to none of the meetings when the suit, when the, uh, senator wanted to put an injunction against the dispensary opening. He said that she blocked the solicitor.
That's not true.
He said, "She said, 'If you block the solicitor.'" She didn't come to any meetings.
That is not true.
Her responsibility was to call a community meeting so that we can say yay or nay. That didn't happen. So, that's one thing that took place. The other thing that took place is that you all, some of you are saying you want traction back.
Okay, now, excuse me, um, just a moment. This councilor's talking so that Ms. McDonald can be heard. Your second question, you, you're allowed an extra minute?
You know what? Just like that young man said, political. All of it is political, and it's a shame. It's a shame.
Not an agenda I.O.
The time is up. Ms. McDonald, Ms. McDonald.
Ms. Beatty, Ms. McDonald.
Ms. McDonald, your time is up.
Thank you.
It is a time of violation of the law of speech. It is a time of violation of the law of speech. It's a violation of the law of speech.
Minister, my last point because I wasn't interrupting.
Yeah, well, I was, I didn't get my last point. Then it's like, yeah, that's for us to have a time. Then it's like, yeah, it's for us to have a time.
That's wrong, Sharon. That's wrong. That's wrong.
That's right. That's right.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
But you know what? Everybody wants to see where the holy grail is. You just say it.
Excuse me, can you stop recording this here, ladies?
Yeah, record it, yes. And put me back on the website. Put me back on the website.
It's a violation of the sunshine law and speed law of rights. That's what she was saying. R-O-A-D. C-L-O-R.
That's what you did for a minute.
Can I finish my point? I was not allowed. And you know, it's done on purpose so that you won't feel offended. Now, it is a lady, let me finish, let me finish my point. Uh, Madam President, Madam President.
I want to hear from the mayor with respect to the independent investigation. That's what I want to hear from. I want to hear from, I want to hear from the mayor about some real business. Like that guy that you talked.
I have a real business.
It is the presence of a market.
I have a business that I didn't have.
No, no, not your head, Sean!
You're out of order. Ms. Penny McDonald, it is the, it is the discretion of this chair to allow...
We don't have a law for that.
The chairship, there is.
All seven of them must have the same name you have. You're part of the Terry.
Okay, Ms. McDonald, your time is up.
So many folks, so many folks were mentioning different, uh, budgets and money that was going out. But I don't give anybody mentioning the four hundred thousand dollars that, uh, Chachi, the mayor, four hundred thousand dollars.
And nobody died. Nobody died.
And that guy, Chris, and I, that is our budget, our general trust. Nobody's talking about that. You know what we need to know? That Chachi was not fired. His contract was not renewed. And they have a right not to renew it. He went over the budget over four hundred thousand dollars.
Our public safety.
Can I please talk? This is something...
Your family should ask why she didn't call a meeting. And Council Beatty's wife, the day of the incident, and the mayor started, and started the investigation the day of the incident.
I called a meeting, yeah, the day of the incident.
The investigation has started. Why hasn't she given you an update? We've been begging for an update too. We're right here with you. But we, what happened? I can't find a man. I can't find a man.
Why were you finding? You weren't still there.
We ain't never killed nobody.
You weren't there.
We ain't killed nobody. Sharon did. Your blood is on her hands. Your blood is on her hands.
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
Say his name, Sean! Say his name, Sean!
I want to apologize.
The G.A. came out here at two fifteen P.M. Ask her my name.
To Sean's family, to his mother. Sean's family stand up. On behalf of residents, all the families stand up.
Council police, ladies and gentlemen.
All the families stand up. On behalf of Sean and the residents of Yehden, we apologize to you all that you had to come here tonight to hear this. That they couldn't take one minute, one day, one hour to stop this nonsense and let this family be heard tonight. I know that my head's shaking and it's sad because his mother lost her son, y'all. Shame on him.
Shame on council.
Regardless of what our difference is here, this is a mom that's here that her heart is hurting. That she's just here trying to ask for questions and answers because she don't know. And she don't know who to turn to. And a mom that is afraid of, afraid of the police, and she should not be because some of them are good people. I watched police officers two Fridays ago up here at this corner. Now, I want to say white or black, but it was a white man. And he had mental issues. And he performed on that corner for almost a half an hour. And he called those police officers every name he could think of. And he told them that they didn't live here and they needed to go back to where they belong. And those officers were humble. And those officers treated that man like he was their brother, their son, and their nephew. And they watched this man walk back over the bridge of Yehden. I watched the whole thing and tasted in tears watching it. And I humbled the police officers were to that man and made sure that he was safe. And I followed him over that bridge and he sat down at that corner at the bus stop to see if he was okay, to see if he needed something to eat or drink. But because of the way that he was acting, I didn't want to go close to him. So, why was Sean not treated like that also? Sean, Sean had mental issues also. Why was he not taken to a mental hospital? We did some research and we sent, we gave you guys information and I shared my thinking of having your stat with things that police officers need to know to do when you approach somebody to that degree. Who was watching the cameras that night knowing that he had mental issues that day? Broad daylight. Who had the key to go back to make sure that this kid was all right? Broad daylight. We don't need to place the blame on seven council people. We need to place the blame where it belongs, which is in the police department. It is the responsibility of the police department. That's why you have the chief. That's why you have...
He don't have a chief. We don't have a chief.
So that, but guess what? That chief trained every last one of these people. They were under his leadership, so they knew what to do. So, that man should not have been left in that cell because of what we are filled with without him being watched. The camera people should have known that that man was in there and they should have watched him because he had mental issues. And I charge council and mayor to make sure that these police officers get training so that they know how to deal with somebody like this. No justice, no peace! No justice, no peace! We want good answers and we want it when? Now!
Thank you.
Once they finish talking about Sean, get up and do not stay here for this nonsense.
Thank you very much.
Third party invested. Hey, Terrell. Again, I called for a meeting. You're up for it.
We called for a meeting the day that it happened.
So, I'm, since, I wasn't sure if we could yield time, but I see that time was yielded from, um, this lady to Ms. Penny. I'm sorry, Ms. Leslie, to Ms. Penny.
No, she didn't, she didn't, they didn't allow it.
Okay, but she allowed it. I want to know if I can allow my time to the cousin because he didn't get a chance to finish his thing.
Your man.
Thank you. That's him. That's him.
How much time were you yielding, ma'am?
Everything.
What I was saying?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how, this is maybe clear, half a minute, half a minute.
One and a half, one and a half.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we can do, right?
Next time. Next time. You got your next one. Okay, basically, I just, um, what I said, I said now, there's some of you, excuse me, there's some of you. Then you keep going because your time is running.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Okay, uh, as I said before, some of you are hollering for Chachi to come back. I like Chachi. However, he said that he's gonna sue us. He's gonna sue us and I, and it's gonna go against our insurance. But the four hundred thousand dollars because of the decision he made, the mayor made and the former, for, former, um, borough, uh, president, the decision that they made is gonna affect our budget. We need to, please be quiet.
Please.
You all need to know that. You need, you don't know all of what's going on and you're rallying behind things without even paying attention to what's going on. Pay attention to what I'm saying. Ask me questions. Ask questions. I'm not saying it just to go by what I'm saying. What I'm saying is don't rally and come up here acting all a fool. You know what I mean? Especially against one another. The other thing I want to know is how many black police officers did we hire? It was sent by the mayor and Chachi going around in Philadelphia dealing with residents. We never had a black police chief. Have any of them? Okay, thank you, thank you.
They got rid of him and still can't get a black chief.
I think I finished my whole one this time.
You got something on your mind?
Madam Counsel, I only have a finished one. If I can take a few, I can take a few.
Let me, why, Steve, you have that for you?
I'm embarrassed. What the hell are y'all doing? What is this? Listen, let me tell you something. I, I tested the council from kindergarten to sophomore grade, right? They never acted as childish as y'all doing right now.
Damn, this, this is embarrassing.
This guy, listen.
We'll see you the same time next month.
And let me, let me make sure we're clear here. If we're not getting answers now, it's what it's looking like. We'll be here and we'll be single one of y'all meet us until we get our answers. I would love to...
I suggest you... Stop interrupting me.
I have a minute. I would love to hear from our mayor regarding this situation because he's been awfully quiet. Mr. Mayor, you're in charge of all this, what the hell is going on? Where is Sean? Where's the justice? Are these cops still on the streets? Why are they still on the streets? What is going on? We have no answers. It's been over two weeks. We haven't heard anything from the mayor or the council. Hello? Look, we haven't heard anything.
Silence is violated.
You're a councilwoman.
She been asking, she don't tell.
You're a councilwoman, what has it been?
She been asking, she don't tell.
Third-party investigation.
Mr. Mayor, you
Third-party investigation. Mayor, request a third-party investigation.
I would like to speak, but I'm bound by a woman. Still have, still have four minutes. Three minutes. Two seconds.
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
Keep being here till we get peace, till we get justice. We're gonna keep coming, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at you, we're coming.
Did you get my call? Your time is up, sir. Your time is up, sir. Did you get my call? Your time is up, Mr. Mayor.
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
No justice!
No peace!
We want Mayor Hapkins to represent the third-party investigation. The officer was best duty. Normally, an officer is supposed to be best duty. Administratively, Mayor, why have you not done that, Mayor?
Point of order? Point of order.
We don't want to attack anybody up there, right? Nope.
Point of order.
It's the mayor's job. It's the mayor's job.
Point of order, or is that only your fault to me?
Sharon, I am embarrassed here, but It's not about embarrassment, you gotta do what you're doing.
Okay, yeah, we're going to, for the reports, Sharon.
No, there, I put in a request for a citizens forum because I'm also a citizen here.
Consideration.
No, I, I, the citizens forum, hold on, now, no. Because I've walked it right on
Family member, family member.
Your other people need to speak, and I put in a request as well.
Where is your request?
I, my request was up there, I don't know if you lost it, or what happened, I think it's in the group. But I would love to say other people were saying it honestly. I'm here with the family, so I wasn't even gonna speak because I'm not, well, my name is Carol King, so it asked for my name first to even know. I was just here in support of the family of what happened tragically to Sean. And I was also here just requesting that an internal, honestly, investigation transpire.
That's on our agenda today.
Okay.
And that will be addressed, and we want you to just be a location, but this, we'll get to that on the new
All right, and I do just wanna make a comment, as the President, and I don't know if you are the Vice President, but if you are, regardless of what other opinion everyone else is having on the side, you guys are also to lead with leadership. And I'm very upset and disturbed to see my sisters up here like that. And we're going too much points and fingers.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. And the truth of the matter is, when you perform like that, we all look bad. And it's not to point my finger directly at you, I'm just saying collectively. But we need to get this in order because I used to live here also in Yaden. And I know that this can be way better than what I've seen. And some of the things that I am hearing on an ouster from the other council members are not something that is crazy. But we have to stop that because I'm not happy from what I just seen from both of you. You have to lead with leadership. And Mayor, you were elected, so I expected more. Especially when people were crying out to you for help, for answers. You should have been given that. And if you don't know, then say, listen, I don't know, let me put you to the side. But there is no way that we have, and I'm saying we because I'm speaking on them, have elected people to sit in these seats to act the way that you're acting because they honestly conducted half of this meeting. So, that's all I have to say, you don't even have to cut me off because if you know the real me by now, I'm very disturbed. Please lead with leadership, and listen to your other council members, because what they were saying was not crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator President, I ask you to be recognized. I put in a, I put in a forum for citizens forum because I'm also a citizen. I can do it from here, or I can do it from the podium.
Excuse me. I've been asked time and time again, time and time again, though, not to get on a platform, but to conduct the business of the town. And in an effort to do that, our first call and charge is to pay sales for the town. These lights that you're sitting on.
You're speaking for my
To pay the salaries
We're still in citizens
And the staff.
I'm asking for a point of order because you're taking, you're taking this off, and I have information for the family of Charles
Because you have councilor.
I have information for the
Now, you're interrupting the chair. When you have, when you have councilor that will not respect the chair, Mr. Monroe sat in this chair
You said you were saying in your president's report for the end.
And now you have people yelling out of the audience, you won't hear it. There is a certain protocol for not only this council
And you're not
But for all of you that are here. When you talk about leadership, leadership first has to have respectability.
Then structure, 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 structure. You have every opportunity to structure everyone that was sitting here. I have yet not heard you told anyone to take it, calm it down. You have not put any structure, so please don't throw any shots up there. You have every right to put on every leadership as you sit up there, and you didn't do that in one hit. I watched you, you know, one hit, done you. Now, the order is, like she said, call it off because you're still doing a special forum. Then you go with the agenda. If it's over, then you make sure that nobody else has any further comments.
You are incorrect.
No, you're incorrect, I know what's happening.
You are incorrect.
Sitting up here throwing shots back here.
I'm, I'm asking Council President, I am asking to be recognized.
I'm sorry.
Council President, I'm asking to be recognized. I put in a, I put in a forum for a citizens forum to speak. I recognize you. Council President, I'm trying to, Council President, I'm trying to, I'm trying to ask
You're a forum to the mayor's forum. You suggested, you had the She has a council person, she has a council She is a council
Council President, I'm asking, I'm asking
No justice!
No peace!
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 No justice!
No peace! No peace! No peace!
Good job, Sharon.
No peace!
Good job. Consideration of their council
No, Council, Council, Council President, I'm asking for permission, I'm asking for recognition. I'm asking for recognition. All right, then I'm gonna talk to you. I had, I asked for permission for the election. I asked for permission. I'm asking for a point of order.
I had a thing up there.
And he has one too. We have three people, and he lost my
Wait, my board.
That's Andrew, that's No, we have three people who are wishing, no. We have
No, there's no motion on the floor, no motion on the floor, there's no motion.
We are wishing, no, no.
Right now, waiting for the justice.
This meeting is adjourned.
Now, what she will do is, she'll schedule a special meeting so that people can come just to approve her agenda. But she didn't care for decency to schedule a special meeting to deal with this tragedy that took place two weeks ago.
And the DA came here at two fifteen P M and started the investigation here. Immediately after, council meeting asked for an executive session, which is a meeting of all of council to discuss this. Two weeks went by, two weeks we didn't have one, and when we did, the only thing she said is she's gonna blame this on the previous administration. And that this man never updated our policies, when we had policies that he's been updating since the day he started. It was pretty annoying to read, which is why I remember it. One of the policies that
That's what they did
Was the prisoner holding policy.